Good evening and welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting for Monday, May 22. The time is now 6:30 and we will call this meeting to order. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Lavelle, can we please have a roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Costelli.
Here.
Mr. Doring.
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti.
Here.
Mrs. Raccio.
Here.
Dr. Reed. Ms. Regan.
Here.
Dr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Votto.
Here.
Eight members present and voting.
Thank you very much, and Dr. Reed is en route, so we should have her here shortly. One housekeeping matter, item number 12 E. Point three. Due to my tardiness, that is not ready for this evening, so I would like to make a motion to postpone that until the June meeting when I will have a final draft.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Thank you for amending the agenda, and I will have that ready for next month. Okay, moving on to our Student Board Representatives from Lyman Hall. Is Paige here tonight? Hi, Paige.
Good evening. I hope you've all been well this month. I'm here tonight to give my last report for Lyman Hall on May's activities and our upcoming events for June. Some general updates: The Student Council is presently running elections for the 2023-2024 school year, and class elections for rising sophomores, juniors, and seniors are taking place on June 1st. Lyman Hall Productions, along with the Squarefoot Theater, presented their production of the play Into the Woods this past Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. From the College and Career Center, they will be taking students on an overnight field trip to visit five colleges in Rhode Island from June 19th to 21st. From the senior class, Lyman Hall Senior Class will enjoy a night of dinner and dancing at this year's prom at Aquaturf in Plainsville, Connecticut on Friday, May 26th. The night's theme is Midnight Moments. Seniors will get together at Holiday Hill for their annual outing scheduled for Thursday, June 1st. Some sports updates: Other than one more week for the golf team, the Lyman Hall Spring Regular Season has come to a close. The coaches put in a tremendous amount of time and energy again this season. Although we can't announce the names as of today, we had a good number of students earn all SEC honors this season. More importantly, our student athletes demonstrated that they took their roles as students seriously, as over 99% remained academically eligible this season, with scores of students earning honors. The baseball team qualified for the SEC and state tournament. They open up the SEC Tournament playing against Notre Dame tonight. The boys lacrosse team qualified for states. They will open the tournament playing this weekend, and brackets will be announced on Thursday. The golf team has qualified for states. They will be playing in the state tournament next month. The track team will compete in the SEC Championship Meet tomorrow, and they will focus on the states over the next couple of weeks. Other upcoming important dates: May 31st is Scholarship Night at Lyman Hall. June 7th and 8th are the senior exams. June 7th, Varsity Scholar Night happens for seniors. June 9th, 12th, 13th, and 14th are final exams for all students at Lyman Hall. And June 15th is the last day of school and the graduation ceremony for our seniors. And those are all the updates I have, and I would like to thank you for your time, and I have been honored to work with you for this past school year. Thank you.
Paige, on behalf of the Board, I would just like to thank you. You've brought us wonderful updates. You've been very consistent. And I know every evening that you're here with us is an evening that you're away from your family, your friends, and doing your schoolwork. So thank you for your dedication and all the news you've brought us this year. And next, we have our Board Reps from Mark T. Sheehan, Jacqueline and Leah. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. It's crazy how this year is already coming to an end, so we're here to give you our final update. The Student Council just wrapped up a cereal drive during Teacher Appreciation Week. Many teachers received boxes from their students indicating that they are appreciated by their students. Sheehan raised about 30 boxes of cereal, which were all donated to Master's Manor. Juniors recently just had their prom at Fire on the Ridge on May 13th. All Sheehan and Lyman Hall CNA students took and passed their state exam on May 16th. The CNA students will then be recognized for all their hard work and efforts this year on May 30th at Sheehan in the auditorium for their pinning ceremony. On May 17th, Sheehan's band and chorus hosted their spring concert. On May 18th, the AP Art Students were able to highlight all their hard work they have put into creating their many pieces for their portfolios at the art show, which was at the Hubcap. Tomorrow, May 23rd, there is NGSS Testing, which is a science test for juniors. On May 24th, Sheehan is hosting an award night for senior students, where they will be recognized for their academic achievements within classes as well as scholarships they have been granted. On May 25th, any Sheehan students that are playing a sport in college have the opportunity to participate in a signing ceremony to announce their commitment to a school for a sport.
On May 26th, the creative writing classes are showcasing their hard work during the Poetry Slam. Seniors have their outing on June 2nd at Holiday Hill. Senior Prom is June 3rd at the Aquaturf. National Honor Society is celebrating all of the many projects that have been done this year at their concluding banquet on June 7th at SCOW. On June 12th, Sheehan will be hosting a senior sports awards night, where all the multiple sport athletes will be recognized. Finals week begins on the 7th for seniors and the 9th for all underclassmen. After graduation rehearsal on June 13th, Sheehan students will have the opportunity to visit their elementary school teachers while wearing their caps and gowns. Over the summer, current juniors have the opportunity to go on a college tour within Rhode Island for a couple of days through the school, where they are able to visit several schools, including Roger Williams and University of Rhode Island. And lastly, we both just want to say thank you for giving us this opportunity and being invested in all of the amazing things that is going on throughout Sheehan. Thank you.
Thank you both, and again, you have been here every month with us. We appreciate the updates. You've been tag-teaming, which is sometimes harder. So we really do appreciate your time and your time away from your friends and family to be here. We wish you the best in the upcoming month as you finish up your careers with us, and we'll see you again in a few moments. Thank you. At this time, it's probably the most favorite thing that we do as Board of Ed members all years, to recognize our students. I know it might be hard to believe, but it's not always fun to sit up here. This is why we do it, and we are very excited to be able to recognize so many of our students and families this evening. Superintendent Belizzi, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here this evening. This is a wonderful evening, and it's so nice to be able to honor all of our students here. At this time, we're going to recognize the valedictorians and the salutatorians from Lyman Hall High School and Mark T. Sheehan High School. So at this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Rebecca Rose, our ASTE Coordinator from Lyman Hall, and Mr. Enzo Zacco, the Principal of Mark T. Sheehan High School, to speak on behalf of our students.
Good evening and thank you. I bring greetings and congratulations on behalf of the entire administrative team from Lyman Hall. Tonight, we're here to recognize our valedictorian, Hannah Tucksbury, who's an outstanding student who has made a tremendous impact on the community of Lyman Hall High School in her tenure here. Hannah's incredibly impressive resume is a testament to her character and values. In her time at Lyman Hall, Hannah has taken nine Advanced Placement courses, all of which she has excelled in. In addition to her challenging coursework, Hannah also has been highly involved in several extracurriculars, often taking on a leadership role within the activity. Her club involvement includes Unified Sports, Best Buddies, Debate Team, STEM Club, String Ensemble, and Music Studio Ensemble. Hannah has also served as the Secretary of Student Council since her freshman year, while also serving as Vice President of her class freshman year and sophomore year, and then as President of her class junior year and also senior year. Her incredible work ethic and impressive participation in extracurricular activities has been recognized several times, including an induction into the National Honor Society, in which she served on the Scholarship Committee and tutored underclassmen. She was recently awarded the prestigious Yale Seaton Book Award, as well as the SCASA Superintendents Award, which is determined based on outstanding community service and service to others, academic prowess, and leadership to the school community. Hannah is not just an incredibly impressive resume, but a student with great empathy for others and a positive attitude that gains her respect from both her teachers and her peers. She has been an excellent representative of Lyman Hall throughout her time with us. In the fall, Hannah is continuing her education at the University of Connecticut, where she will undoubtedly find great success. Congratulations to Hannah.
I have the honor of introducing the Sheehan Valedictorian, Nellie Koffer. She is an outstanding student whose long list of awards and accolades is a reflection of her determination and future success. Most importantly, Nellie is a true activist, leading initiatives that have improved her school and community. As the Class of 2023 Valedictorian, Nellie not only leads by academic example, but also leads through her ambitious and selfless dedication, giving back to others. Along with, of course, achieving the great accomplishment as the Valedictorian of the Class of 2023, she has also earned many other recognitions, and I'll list a few. The U.S. Presidential Scholar Program nominee among a national competitive field. AP Scholar with Distinction, recipient of the Harvard Book Award. Rochester Institute of Technology Computing Medal. University of Rochester Baoshun Lam Honorary Science Award. Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute Medal Award. She's challenging me with these hard words here. We're getting through them. She's earned the Seal of Bileiteracy both in German and in Spanish. Very impressive. Distinction as SEC All Academic Team for Soccer, Tennis, Indoor and Outdoor Track. SEC Scholar Athlete, Record Journal Scholar Athlete. Yale Young Women's Leadership Launch Participant. She served as the Scholarship Committee Head for the National Honor Society. She's a member of the Triumph Music Honor Society. She leads the pit section for the Marching Titans Band. Outdoors Club President. And she's the co-founder and president of the Teen Empowerment and Social Activism Club. And these are just some of her accomplishments. Nellie plans on attending Carnegie Mellon University with a major in Mechanical and Biomedical Engineering. Congratulations, Nellie.
Up next is the opportunity for each high school to honor their salutatorian. And from Lyman Hall, we have Alyssa Rinaldi. Alyssa Rinaldi demonstrates a level of maturity and responsibility for her own education, rarely seen in a high school student. She is a standout individual who quietly accomplishes great things with grace. Academically, Alyssa has taken every class at the highest level possible. When classes were not able to fit into her schedule, Alyssa found creative means to reach her academic goals through virtual independent options. Alyssa also took the initiative to earn the Seal of Bileiteracy in Spanish. Through her work with ACE's Educational Center for the Arts, Alyssa is a member of the Triumph Music Society. She also was selected to the Connecticut Music Educators Association Regional Orchestra and has been a cellist for the New Haven Concert Orchestra and Youth Orchestra since 2019. Alyssa is an inductee into the Lyman Hall National Honor Society and was the Harvard Book Award recipient in her junior year. Alyssa received the Town of Wallingford Certificate of Recognition for exemplary service for her work as a peer advocate and with the Coalition for a Better Wallingford. It is rare to come across a high school student as focused, responsible, and at the same time as humble as Alyssa. Congratulations.
Okay, I have the honor of introducing the Sheehan Salutatorian, Karen Liu. Karen's intelligence, leadership, and altruism positively impact our school community. His talents in the academics, athletics, as well as in the areas of music and the arts is impressive. Besides, of course, the accomplishment of being the Salutatorian for the Class of 2023, Karen has accomplished and been recognized for many other accolades, some of which include the Yale Book Award and the University of Vermont Citizen Scholar Book Award. West Point Summer Leader Experience recipient. SEC All Academic Teams for Soccer, Indoor Track, and Outdoor Track. SEC Scholar Athlete Award and Scholar Leader Award. Certificate of Excellence in AP Statistics. National Honor Society Vice President. Cooking Club Founder and President. I like that one the best. I like that. Member of the Asian American Culture Club. Sheehan Dramatic Arts Society Member and Concert Choir Member. Volunteer and Job Shadow Experience at Griffith Hospital Department of Psychiatry. Project Leader for National Honor Society Cleanup Day. And a volunteer at the Connecticut Food Bank and Leukemia Society of Connecticut, just to name a few. Most impressive about Karen is his genuine care and concern for others. His initiative and execution of meaningful projects to educate and support his peers include several presentations on student mental health during advisory, which have earned him the respect and admiration of both staff and peers. Karen will be attending UConn in the fall and is majoring in psychology. Congratulations.
What a wonderful accomplishment. Congratulations to all four of you. Really enjoy it. So much to be proud of. Fantastic. The next, we're going to move on to our Student Board Reps. And I would just like to say thank you to our Student Board Representatives. These three young ladies have come every month to provide us with an update regarding what's happening in the schools, and it's been such a wonderful delight to get to know them and to hear the reports from them. So I really just want to say thank you for spending time with us once a month on Monday nights. We really appreciate it. So from Lyman Hall, can I have Paige Two-Hill come down, please? And from Sheehan, may I have Jacqueline DeBazi come down and Leah Harrison, please? Thank you, ladies. Thank you again. We wish you all the best in the future. Off to college. Have fun. Okay, next, I'm going to ask Mrs. Rebecca Rose to come on back up from Lyman Hall. Mr. Zacco and Mr. Snyder from Dag Hammerschall. We're going to move on to the CAPE Student Leadership Awards, and they're going to help introduce these awards, but I wanted to give a little background as to what these students have exemplified in order to earn these awards. So the CAPE Leadership Award Program recognizes two students from each school in the CAPE Membership District. School principals, along with their staff, recognize students who exhibit leadership skills based on certain leadership qualities or criteria, such as willingness to take challenges, capability to make difficult decisions, concerns for others, ability to work with others, willingness to commit to a project, ability to understand issues clearly, and ability to honor that commitment. So tonight, we are very honored to be able to say that we have a number of students who have received this. So, Mr. Snyder, can you start with the middle school for us, please?
For Dag Hammerschall, the 7th grade recipient for the CAPE Student Leadership Award is Vincent Brennan. And the 8th grade recipient from Dag Hammerschall is Taryn Larson. So Mr. Piacentini and Mr. Bellonia couldn't be here tonight. If the Moran parents can just indulge me, we're all friends here, I'm going to announce the names for Moran. The CAPE Leadership Award for Moran, first student, is McKenna Liu. And the next recipient from James H. Moran is Gabriella Ruby.
Lyman Hall is proud to recognize our CAPE recipients, Kaylee McGovern and Henry Murphy.
And for Mark T. Sheehan High School, we have Vincenzo Carbone and Alandra Lopez. Oh my goodness.
You're fired, Enzo.
Oh my goodness, right there. I'm so sorry. I was further down than I should have been. Oh, Lord. For Mark T. Sheehan High School, Savannah Baumann and Jenna Kent. Sorry about that.
Okay, our next group of awards are our SCASA awards. So these awards are our Superintendent Student Awards. So SCASA stands for our South Central Area Superintendent's Association. These student awards recognize superintendents and allow us to allow us to recognize students who move beyond and do things that we wouldn't always routinely recognize, so not just academics. So the criteria for this is these awards are based on community service to others, leadership in the school community, and academic prowess, so abilities and also others doing things outside of the school. So at this time, I am going to ask our administrators to go ahead and introduce. We'll start with Mr. Snyder, our recipients.
Representing Dag Hammerschall for the SCASA Award this year is Jivani Delorge. And representing James H. Moran is Olivia G.
Lyman Hall is proud to present the SCASA Award to Vivian Polowski and Hannah Tucksbury.
No surprises here for Mark T. Sheehan High School. Vincenzo Carbone and Alandra Lopez.
Congratulations to our award recipients. Thank you very much. Next set of awards, I am going to ask Mrs. Kim Moore, the Coordinator for Walled Language and Multilingual Learners, who will present the next two set of awards for Seal of Bileiteracy and the Connecticut Certificate of Global Engagement.
Hi, everyone. As Ms. Belizzi just mentioned tonight, I'm here to honor the students, the 2023 recipients of our Seal of Bileiteracy. This is a national award. To date, 39 states have adopted this and are affording this opportunity to their students. And Wallingford is happy to be one of 68 districts in Connecticut that is making space for this award for our students. This award is given to students who are lingual and literate in a language other than English. Students need to earn an intermediate/mid-level proficiency on a standardized national assessment. Intermediate/mid means our students are able to understand main ideas in supporting facts and passages and narratives. They're able to maintain conversations about themselves and topics beyond themselves, express thoughts, get what they need out of a conversation, add description, tell stories, and ask and answer a variety of questions. This is an optional assessment, so if a student earns this tonight, it means that he or she took the initiative to take this assessment, and it takes about six hours to sit for this exam, so that in and of itself should have a little bit of an award. This is a testament to the hard work of our students for investing in their path to proficiency, and also on the part of our teachers for giving our students multiple formative opportunities over the years to hone these skills and develop these skills. This year's recipients have earned the seal in French, Latin, Italian, Russian, Spanish, and Turkish. So please join me, and we will first recognize our students from Lyman Hall High School, who during the 2022-23 school year earned the Seal of Bileiteracy. Mason Thomas. Elijah Adario. Vivian Polowski. Leanne True. Haley Jordan. Isabella Connolly. Leslie Gaspar. Indira Vialta. Sadie Ulan. Peyton Durant. Jennifer Venegas Ambrosio. Ada Sherwani. Diana Flores. Alexander Madella Cervantes. Maria Nicole Nicolicchia Ordigosa. And Diana Morales. And our recipients from Mark Tishian, Leslie Dominguez. Joelle Dominguez. Sanjana Gade. Emmanuel Garcia. Lisa Dukas. David Fritz. Margarita Golanova. Kristen Casca. Hedrick Alvarez. Viann Dominguez Mendoza. Stephen Gomez. Jennifer Lopez Contra, Contras. Ryan O'Malley. Miguel Ruiz. Reynaldo Sanchez Serna. Fernando Gonzalez Fonseca. Jennifer Huerta. Vincenzo Carbone for real this time, right? Anna Dobson. Nellie Kepfer. Alonja Lopez. And Carolina Suscal. Congratulations to our 2023 recipients of the Seal of Biliteracy. Our next award is the Connecticut Certificate of Global Engagement. This is awarded by the State Department of Education to students who intentionally seek out globally-focused coursework and globally-focused extracurricular activities. In addition, the students need to engage in an action service, learning, or research project. Wallingford is pleased to honor Lyman Hall's Caitlin Mather as a 2023 recipient of the Connecticut Certificate of Global Engagement. Caitlin studied the worldwide effects of the misdiagnosis of endometriosis in women and worked to encourage more women to enhance their advocacy skills and receive proper care. She learned about cultures and healthcare environments around the globe as she interviewed women from different walks of life. Caitlin's findings, Caitlin, you should stay up here. This is, this is a big moment. Caitlin's findings, which she ultimately shared with community members and healthcare professionals alike, include the diverse perspectives and experiences of close to 600 women around the world. Caitlin said, "My project changed the way I look at humankind and the role I play in it. It taught me to lead with courage, serve with generosity, and listen with grace." Congratulations, Caitlin, a Connecticut 2023 recipient of the Connecticut Certificate of Global Engagement.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore, and congratulations. In our last set of awards, I'm going to ask Ms. Rebecca Rose and Mr. Enzo Zacco to come back up again to present the awards to our seniors who have achieved scores of distinction on the Scholastic Achievement Test.
All right, congratulations to all of our students, and apologies in advance for bad name-calling. We have, from Lyman Hall High School, Amanda Adams. Elijah Adario. Amaya Barata. Daniel Carbone. Ryan Christopoulos. Sierra Siak. Isabella Connolly. Anthony Dantonio. Kong Deep. Corey Dowling. Kevin Duong. Peyton Durant. Callie Foreman. Brady Galligan. Maddie Jeremiah. We'll wait for the kids to catch up to the applause. This one's Maddie, if you didn't know. Just one of mine. There we go. Okay, all caught up. Hope Jackson. Abigail Jenkins. Haley Jordan. Dorothy Madancy. Alexa Moreno. Mackenzie Markart. Joseph Maroon. Reina Jen Maralaya Munoz. Kyle Shea. Aida Sherwani. Emma Tamal. Hannah Tuxbury. Paige Twohill. Amanda Witcher. And Rand Zam Sassy.
And for Mark Tishian High School, Savannah Baumann. Olivia Begley. Miles Bishop. Emily Conti. Ryan Crilly. Sydney Cuticelli. Joelle Dominguez. Colin Doyle. Ismael El Gucci. Eric Holman. Sylvie Carusi. Riley Kearns. Grace Keenan. Jenna Kent. Nellie Kofer. Stephen Lee. Karen Liu. Victoria Lukaitis. Julia Ludovico. Luke Mallinson. Nathan Morehouse. Courtney Merzak. Etika Patel. Aiden Pelletier. Anthony Pietrowitz. Ryan Rubino. Luke Selka. Natalie Zurwisky. Evan Vestakis.
Another round of applause for all of our recipients.
Superintendent Belizzi, thank you very much. Principals and administrators who assisted, thank you. Members of the public, you can see why this is our favorite time of year. Accomplishments celebrated here this evening are nothing other than extraordinary. Not only were you able to do this, but you had COVID in your way, and I think that deserves another round of applause. We are all very proud of you, and we look forward to celebrating all of your other achievements as we move towards the end of the school year. To the parents, thank you for always supporting your students. To the students, go give your parents a hug tonight. They deserve it. Thank you. Our meeting will continue, but I will give a 60-second pause if there's anybody who might have other things to do this evening and wants to leave. I don't know who we are talking. Mine's in the car. Sure, sure. Thank you. Yes. Thank you, yes. I knew there was one. We're still rolling. Okay. Thank you for those of you who have decided to stay with us. We appreciate that. Next on our agenda is item number six, public comment. Is there public, anybody who would like to speak to the public this evening? Great. Let me just, no, I said great because I'm going to read the statement, so we have somebody. I was happy we had somebody. "The Board welcomes public comment as it represents an opportunity for members of the public to express their views to the Board on matters within the Board's authority. We ask that all speakers maintain appropriate standards of decorum. No boisterous or inappropriate conduct is permitted. We expect comments to be respectful and in civil tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, or vulgarity. All comments must be directed to the Board and not to any individual Board member or individual member of the Administration." Although the Board values and appreciates the input of public comment, the Board and the Administration will not be responding to questions or engaging in dialogue during the public comment period. Instead, the Board and the Administration will determine whether, when, and how to address questions that may arise during the public comment period, and whether to address the issues on the agenda of a future meeting." Please feel free to come up, and if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Amy Grant, 34 Fairlon Drive. I'd like to express my concerns about tonight's agenda item 7.7 called "Approval to Utilize $100,000 From Unencumbered Funds For An RFP For An Owner's Representative Firm." Having watched the last Board of Education meeting online, I understand that Superintendent Belizzi is requesting this money to help with Board of Education communication efforts related to school consolidation. The superintendent said, and I quote, "So that everyone knows exactly why we have voted the way we did. While there are other ideas in this discussion thrown about, potentially using the consultants for long-range planning and oversight, it was evident that the Board agreed this would likely have to be a subsequent bid, an RFP, and that this money would be used primarily for communications as it relates to high school consolidation." So basically PR. So I have two concerns with this issue. First, this is yet another example of failed transparency with the Board. The topic was brought up on the last meeting without being on the agenda. The lack of disclosure did not allow for public comment or for the public to be informed and ready to comment. Additionally, there continues to be a refusal to conduct a question-and-answer session with the public. When only public comment is allowed and items are left off the agenda or made intentionally obscure, it's hard to have public comment prepared. It ends up feeling very underhanded, even if that's not the intention. This refusal to allow for Q&amp;A is a violation of your own policies, which encourage public participation and questions and answers. Even the way it's worded on tonight's agenda, "Approval to Utilize $100,000 From Unencumbered Funds For An RFP For An Owner's Representative Firm", that is not something an average layperson would understand as related to the school consolidation topic. Second, we understand that the 2024 budget cuts the Board of Education has received are substantial, and if Superintendent Belizzi's proposal is accepted, this will result in the cutting of numerous in-school roles, including teachers. Yet only one vacant clerk role in the central office will be impacted. I understand that the request for unencumbered funds is for in-year spending, and the budget cuts are for 2024, but my concern is that the spending of another $100,000 to try and convince people school consolidation is a good idea seems fiscally irresponsible, and it comes across as tone-deaf and condescending to the townspeople. Given the amount of public opposition to consolidation, I venture to say the town is quite well-informed and has made their feelings evident. So I just wanted to voice my concern tonight about the substantial spending and the contingent lack of transparency on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I do hope you stay. It is on our consent agenda, and there will be more discussion. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment. I will now entertain a motion for consent, to approve the consent agenda, items 7.1 through 7.6 and 7.8 through 7.21. Can I have a second? Okay, Mr. Ross and Mr. Vado are fighting over second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number 7.7, "Approval to Utilize $100,000 From An Unencumbered Fund For An RFP For An Owner's Representative Firm." Mrs. Passeretti pulled this off the agenda, and I will let her address it, and I believe Superintendent Belizzi also has some words.
Thank you, Chair Rachio. Chairperson Rachio, Mrs. Rachio. I never know which is the right thing to say. But I thank you. Item 7.7, I pulled off the consent agenda. I know that this particular item number was subject to a lot of discussion. I'm not a big proponent of social media, but that's where it was. And it seemed, and of course it was covered by The Record Journal, in the headline that sort of shook up a lot of our residents. And so, as you can see, someone came for public comment, and that was their concern, was item 7.7. I would like the opportunity, or I'd like to give the opportunity, Mrs. Belizzi, to clarify some of the points that were made during that meeting, and the reason why it was a unanimous decision to move this forward to the consent agenda for tonight. Mrs. Belizzi.
Thank you, good evening. So some of the things that we had talked about that evening were to hire this firm, or potentially hire a firm, to go out and look at numerous things, so multiple scopes of service, not just a communication focus, but a focus to develop a 10-year strategic plan for all of our facilities. So one thing we learned through both of the studies that have come through is that we have learned a lot of information about all of our buildings and the needs of those buildings. And so we are looking to have what we call a 10-year waterfall plan, to look at all of our buildings, to look at the needs of every single one of them, to put them in a 10-year plan. So it is very clear as to what each building needs, the estimated cost to go with it at the time we're creating it, and what our phases are, so to speak, to being able to complete those projects on all of those buildings. We have 12 buildings, and so there are a lot of needs. So that is one piece, is to help facilitate that project, to work with our Director of Building and Grounds, and myself, and our business manager, and our central office team, to create one large 10-year plan. So everyone's clear as to what the focuses are for our buildings, to take a look at some of those specifics. Another thing we're looking at is to develop educational specifications. So you all have approved the one consolidated high school, is what you're looking at. And so there were a lot of questions when we were going through this process as to what are the specifics? What would a one consolidated high school look like? What would be the educational specifications for this high school? What would the long-range educational plan, the programming? What would the building systems look like? The size of the rooms, the development of all of the soup-to-nuts of the building? So that is something we're also looking at, continuing to get further detail around that. We're also looking at something that had come up throughout our process, even when we presented, I believe, here at Town Hall that time, was an analysis of a site. We had talked about the fact that the Board did not approve a specific site, but that the only site at the time that is available for us is the Lyman Hall land. And so there was further discussion on, have we done our due diligence on our end as a Board to look at everything that would need to be done? Could that site hold a facility of one consolidated high school? So we had looked into then what other things could be done, not saying that's the definite site, but if it is, what things needed to be done to make sure that the land is large enough, that we can build on all of the property that is there, and that we have done all of the assessments needed on that site to ensure that if it comes down to that being a location of it, it is ready to go for us, there's no surprises there. And to the last piece, it is, there is a communication piece that comes along with it. And so they would communicate the strengths and the advantages along with us, they would work with us for that moving forward. So those are the components that we are looking for within the RFP that was approved, or consensus was taken the last time.
Thank you, Mrs. Belizzi. And as a Board member who's been up here for six, this is my sixth year, we did not rush this process. We went slow, we were deliberate. Could we have done things differently, maybe in some cases? But I don't know that some of the things that we did with the intent that we did were received as we expected. And I'll give an example. When we first started speaking about the high schools, we wanted to make sure it was a community decision, everybody had a voice. And one of the things, and we spent several conversations, how do we make sure the community is involved? We put the surveys about high schools, and it wasn't just one high school or two high schools. It was what were your values as a community? The number-one value of this community was the academic outcomes. And that is what shined through every single, no matter how you sliced it and diced it, that was the number-one priority, which we're all very proud of. We had the survey go out in multiple places. The senior center, the library, Town Hall, they all had boxes. We also put the survey in every electric bill. Our intent was to get it to as many people as possible for them to have the voice and tell us what their priorities were for Wallingford Public Schools. It was not to hide it in your electric bill. That was not the intent. We were very concerned to make sure that it was a community decision, and that people didn't feel like if they did not have a child in the system, they didn't have a voice. So if people don't feel that we were transparent, or that we were deliberate, or that we took our time, okay, maybe there's things we could have done differently. Those questions will be asked to a professional who is going to help us develop a communication plan. How do we do it? How often do we communicate? To what size groups do we communicate? We did in-person meetings, we did virtual meetings. We did virtual meetings where we sat in classrooms, and then we went to an in-person meeting after. We did e-blasts. I don't know what other ways that we could have asked for public input and had the amount of people that came once the decision was made. I am very hopeful now that there's attention on this, and now that this is getting, just having parents come tonight, that's a huge step in the right direction. And I hope that everybody does stay engaged. The owner's rep firm was talked about multiple times at meetings before the vote. And I just hope everybody stays engaged. Mrs. Castelli.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments I wanted to make. What sold me on spending this money truly was the waterfall 10-year plan. We need to know what we're doing with our schools. Regardless of one high school or two high schools, we need to know the proper process that we should be following for our schools. Our educational leaders are not in the construction business. I don't expect them to have the skill set that would allow them to make these decisions. We need expert help in getting to what our 10-year plan should be. And additionally, just on the issue of the one versus two high school and the educational...
Specifications.
Specifications. We have a very diversified community now. Wasn't always that way. It's very diversified. We need to make sure that our educational programming is going to help every student, because that's in our mission statement. Every student achieves success. And we need to be able to offer that. And the best way to do that, as far as my personal research, is with one school. Thank you.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yeah, I just want to kind of reinforce what you said, Mrs. Castelli, about the 10-year plan. I think the issue that's right in front of us is the high school, and that's no doubt, and that's where we're starting. But this is more than just the high school. This is what is the state of our middle schools, this is what is the state of our elementary schools. And I know the middle schools are in probably worse condition than our high schools. And we know that there are the portable units in the elementary schools that are so outdated, and it's a monumental task, and we just can't do it ourselves. So I do appreciate the fact that we do need some guidance. How do we approach this from a long-term topic or a long-term plan? And so I do appreciate the fact that we are going to get some help with that, and to help us organize ourselves, and really put a structure in place that benefits all our students. So thank you.
Anybody else? Dr. Reed?
Yes, good evening. I've recently read, I'm going to piggyback on the 10-year plan, and that's what really sold me on this, knowing what our other buildings need and how to go about that. I recently read an Ed Weekly article about how there was a survey given across the country to over 250 administrators, and at least, or over 50%, said that their schools are not environmentally acceptable for learning. The article stated that we have not put funding into, federal funding into our schools since post-World War II. Currently, there is some funding federally that has been proposed, it has to move through Congress. Moving that down to our district, our buildings are not as old as maybe some districts in the country, but they are not new. And we do need to start to work on them and put money into them so that our kids get what they need out of our buildings. So that is what sold me on that $100,000, and it's not being taken from next year's budget, as was stated. It's from, you know, this year's that is available, and I think that we need to look at our schools and what we need in the next 10 years for them.
Thank you, Mrs. Passeretti. Oh, are you waving for Dr. Roscoe? Sure.
Thank you so much. Thanks for advocating for me. So I just wanted to piggyback on what was said in terms of the 10-year waterfall plan. This is the thing that I think is crucial to moving Wallingford forward to the place that, no matter where you sit in the educational spectrum, everyone wants to see the best for our students. I know I've received so many emails talking about safety, and just like technology, safety is always improving. We're always seeing something new coming out. I equate safety and technology very much the same, not just in terms of progression. And this is why it's important to have a professional. It is very hard for us to keep a pulse on the latest and greatest in every single area, although I think we try our best, we are human, and this is why you hire professionals. I also think it'll be very helpful in terms of the idea of transparency, because everyone will know exactly what this plan looks like. And so it won't be shocking when we say now it is time to replace the portables, because this is where, you know, this is the timing we are at in the plan. And so I do think that this 10-year plan is really going to be helpful for the entire town to be able to see where we are going, and to allow us to stay really current, so that we are always providing our students here in Wallingford the best, because no matter where you sit, that is absolutely what they deserve.
Mr. Ross?
Yes, I agree with everything Minion said tonight. The only thing I have a question about is, we previously hired a firm that did a dive for us, and they came up with the fact that they found that the best place to put the new high school, if we went to one school, was Lyman Hall. I hope that we're not spending more money to repeat those findings, and it's going ahead rather than talk about the site, because I feel we spent quite a lot of money on the last group, and their findings were, they even came up with a plan, and they showed us how the building would fit on the site. Now, what I'm getting out of this is this group is going to go back and start from scratch again. Am I wrong here?
Mrs. Belizzi.
So, Mr. Ross, that was what they called a feasibility. So because of the time, and we're still in this current position, there is not a available piece of land for us to move one high school to. They did what we call a feasibility to see if it could fit. So with both of the studies, they used Lyman Hall, because that is the only available piece of property at the time, right now, where we are, that we could at least see if it could fit, and see if it's feasible to have one high school. So the plan that they put together, that has been shared, the pictures, and what's been in the presentations that I've done, it's just a feasibility, it's just a sketch. And so it's not an exact model, which is why we want to go forward with the educational specs. It's a sample, just to give people an idea as to what it may look like, and if it could possibly fit or not. So it is, the only reason it's Lyman Hall High School land right now is because that is the only available piece of land we have right now to use.
I'm going to follow up on that. At what point do we turn this over to the council?
So I think we did our initial presentation to share where we were with the study. I think after we get through the budget, I will follow up back again with the mayor. I had requested a meeting with him, and we decided that it would be better to wait till after the budget is finalized, we get through budget season, and we go back and revisit this project. Have a conversation with him, and then decide where it goes from there.
Okay. What I mean, turn over to the council, the whole project? What I mean, turn over to the council, the whole project, rather than just, when do they take over the project from us and foot the expenses?
So I think that will come out of my conversation with the mayor, because it'll have to start there, engage his interest in understanding of what we have, and then it will be a determination in his recommendation to turn it over to the council from there. That is my understanding of the process.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Castelli.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, make sure it's very clear. Ms. Belizzi stated it, but I wanted, I need to correct you, Mr. Ross. They didn't choose to use Lyman Hall. We directed them to use Lyman Hall for the feasibility study, because Dr. Menzo had gone out and looked for property in the town, and there was none available. He requested a feasibility study on whether or not one consolidated high school would fit on the Lyman Hall property. I just want to make sure that that's clear. This was not the firm that decided it needed to go on Lyman Hall's property. That was Dr. Menzo's request to see if it could fit, because there was nothing else available.
And as a follow-up to that, Mrs. Castelli, this study may come back and say it is not acceptable. They may say because of wetlands or something else, that although it would fit, based on the drawings that we had, it may not be feasible with the architectural specs and the deeper dive. So, you know, we need to know that before we could even apply for a grant or do anything else. Any other comments on 7.7? Mrs. Passeretti.
Just to wrap this up, thank you for your clarification, your mini-presentation. I just want to wrap it up by saying, by spending this money, by going with this firm, we're doing our due diligence, and we hear everything that people have said to us, we're listening. It's true that we probably could have done things, bless you, we could have done things a little bit differently, maybe, but this is, I think, a step in the right direction. And we want to do things the right way, and we feel that this is the way to do it. So, thank you.
Hearing no other discussion on the item, I will change, oh, I'm sorry. Were you leaning backwards and trying to put your hand up so I couldn't see you? Mr. Vado.
I just wanted to add that, what everybody else has been saying, but I just, this has been going on for, since 2018, and we have put our heart and soul into this project. And I think it's amazing that we've had, we have board meetings every month, and this has been discussed time and again, not at every board meeting, but everybody out there knew we were thinking of this. And what amazes me is that no one ever came to a board meeting and said a word about it, whether they agree with us, disagree, what they want for a high school. Nothing was ever mentioned until after we made the decision. That's too bad. But we had to do therefore what we thought was best for our children and for this town. And I am proud, and I am confident to say that we did our due diligence. And if anybody doubts that, I'm sorry, but we have more than any other, well, we do other projects as well. I've been around here for a long time, and I've seen the board work very hard at these things. It's not, some of the decisions are not easy, but we do our best, we look into things, our superintendent works hard to try to find alternatives or additions or whatever. I just feel that need, the need to reemphasize the fact that we have done our due diligence. Thank you.
I agree with what everybody said, and actually at the beginning of this term, because we knew the work that had to be done in facilities for the first time in my tenure, I don't even know how long it goes back, but, Mr. Vado, you and two other board members, chair of facilities committee. That was established this term, because we knew what was going to be coming down the pike with projects and efforts to try to improve our buildings. So, thank you to the members who do serve on that committee. And hearing no other, do I really have no other comments?
Anything. I just wanted, very shortly, there was feedback given in the survey, and I am going to fully acknowledge that those surveys did go out, and we did receive feedback from that, and we, those were very clear. That was also a very small representation of the town of Wallingford, and I just hope that everyone thinks, doesn't think that we just tossed that aside and that we didn't consider that. That is a very, when we're looking at the educational needs of all the town, we do have to consider the entire town of 45,000-ish people, and that population that came back with that survey was very, very small. If I'm not mistaken, it was a very small percentage, but we did not simply toss that aside and not consider that. It was taken into consideration.
Hearing no other discussion on the item, I will entertain a motion to approve to utilize $100,000 from unencumbered funds for the RFP for an owner's representation firm. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention, motion carries. That was our item, we moved from consent agenda, now we are on to correspondence. Secretary Roscoe, please.
Thank you so much. So we have a couple thank-yous to acknowledge tonight. The first one is from Christopher Popovich, the Senior Director of Operations from Hartford Healthcare, and this was donated to Dr. Magnifico for the Adult Education, and it's a phlebotomy chair from Midstate Medical, which is part of Hartford Healthcare, and it's to be used in the phlebotomy class at Sheehan High School. So I know that will be put to good use, and we're really working to build up that medical curriculum, which I love to see. So, thank you so much for that donation. The second one was a donation that came through Kathy Nealon, our Nurse Coordinator of Health Services. It is for 10 boxes of Narcan nasal spray, and that has come from Natalie at the Coalition for a Better Wallingford. And so we thank you very much for that donation. That is something that is needed in our schools, but hopefully they just sit there and are not readily utilized. This next one, I will say, I get to see a lot of thank-you notes that come across this desk, and this seems to absolutely be my favorite. So I'm just going to show this photo of our students on their trip to Iceland, and I know all the board got to see this beforehand, and Superintendent Belizzi, I have this photo for you. But this is the most amazing thank-you note, because all the students have signed it and shared a little bit about their experience, but I will just read the sentiments of the note. Dear Board of Ed, thank you for approving and supporting our trip to Iceland. It was an amazing learning experience. And I love reading the little notes from the students. As someone who got to travel abroad as a high school student, it is an incredible amendment to your education, and so I'm glad that they had that incredible experience. So, thank you so much for sharing this note. That's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Roscoe. Moving on to committee reports. Mr. Ross, do we have anything from ACIS Governing Board for this month? Nothing to report?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Turner, Special Education PTAC update.
Good evening. After our last Board of Education meeting, we had our Special Education Resource Fair. It was very well attended by not only Wallingford families, but families from across the state, as far as Ellington all the way down to Fairfield. So it was really well attended. We had over 40 vendors, including state agencies, attorneys, toys, healthcare needs, so it was really, it was excellent. Many of the parents and vendors inquired about next year already, so we will be thinking about that. And our meeting this month has been canceled. We will meet at the end of, or in the middle of next month before the end of school.
Thank you very much. It was definitely a great event, and I enjoyed even seeing the lawn signs out about the Special Education Fair. So thank you, and thank you to the Record Journal for giving coverage to it and bringing attention to an event that is planned all year. The Special Education PTAC works on that and starts picking a date in the fall, and it's definitely grown in size, and the spirit of it, that we have vendors and families come from all over, is a testament to the effort that's put in by that group. So thank you. Next on the agenda is the Cabe Report, and I do expect more on that as the legislative session closes early next month, and then we will have a more in-depth update there. There has been proposals about extending the requirement to be compliant with the legislation for the Right to Read Act, and it is, wow, I won't, you'll tell us where that is when you do your administrative update, but I don't believe we've gotten a waiver or anything on that yet. So there will be more to come on the Cabe Report and what's happening legislatively next month. Item number 11 on our agenda is old business. I don't believe we have any. Moving on to 12, that is executive session. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the food service contract and acceptance of, I'm sorry, acceptance of retirement.
Shall I move?
Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We are now in executive session. Thank you. Thank you, and we are now back from executive session. The next item on our agenda is item number 13, our instructional committee. Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado?
Thank you, Mrs. Rachio. Before us on item number 13.2, well, my paper says 13.2, but it's really 13.1, is the approval of acceptance of retirement. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Allison McWeeny effective June 30th, 2023. Allison McWeeny has been a speech pathologist since August 2003 for a total of 20 years in the Wallingford Public Schools. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Rachio.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 14, our Operations Committee, and I will turn that over to Ms. Reagan and Mrs. Castelli, please.
I'm going to have Mrs. Castelli take care of 14.1. Thank you.
Thanks. I hope you enjoyed your trip wherever you were. I know it was work-related. Anyway, yes, our meeting of May 8th, here's a summary of what we did. Mr. Barone reported our financial reports through April 2023. He reported that what projected unexpendated funds for the month is $776,000. That's a decrease of $158,000 from the previous month, and the main reason for that decrease is the proposal of technology purchases. Mr. Barone discussed the request to use unencumbered funds and the town council's additional appropriation of $250,000 based on our settlement with the Durham Bus Company. Consensus of the Operations Committee was to send the financial reports to the full board for approval, and they were on this agenda. Ms. Belizzi discussed the possible RFP for the owner representation firm that we also just discussed, so I won't say anything more about that. The consensus of the Operations Committee was sent to the, to request that we spend that money, and we pulled it from the consent agenda, and we talked about it again tonight, and we approved it. Ms. Belizzi also read a statement about the transfer authority approval request. This is something that happens every year at the end of the year, because there is not enough time for action to close out the year if we wait for a board meeting. So therefore, we do give Ms. Belizzi the authority to make all those transfers. And that also went on the agenda, the consent agenda. Okay. And then Cafeteria Report, Mr. Bondi reported that there is a projected monthly surplus of $63,425 and a year-to-date surplus of $649,656. I just want to make a statement for the public that this money must remain with the cafeteria or the food service. It is not money that the town or we can utilize for anything else. It has to be utilized strictly for the food services. We accepted those reports, and they were on the consent agenda as well. Then Mr. Diptula gave us a maintenance and facilities update. We reviewed the Sheehan Track and Field Project. The Lyman Hall softball field design is complete, and we'll be going out to bid for construction. And he also discussed some of the new items on the project summary document. And that was it.
Thank you. And then we move on to item 14.2. I'm going to make a motion for the approval of the food service contract with the Wallingford Board of Education dated July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, can you please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you both. Moving on to item 15, our administrative report. Superintendents.
Good evening again. Before I get into sharing some updates, I want to make sure I acknowledge some of the gifts that we also received. So EC Stevens and Pond Hill School received a $400 donation from the Wallingford Housing Authority, Bill Bryant, for classroom supplies for art and PE, and for a Ziggle Ride-On toy and a small trampoline. So we thank him very much for that as well. And the second donation is to Sheehan High School Library and Media Center for $75. This was from the Wallingford Community of Women. Sally Tremaine has, had made that donation. So we want to say thank you to both of them for including those donations for us as well. Some of the other things I just wanted to highlight was, I really have to say, tonight was such a lovely evening. It was so wonderful to see all of our students and to have them all recognized, and to really honor all of their hard work and dedication throughout the years, to see their families there. It was just such a lovely, it's always such a great event, and it's such a wonderful night, so I'm so glad we were able to do that. In terms of budget, Central Office has been working very hard to look at what we can be presenting for this coming Wednesday night and sharing some ideas and further discussion with all of you regarding our budget. We've spent a lot of time going through these past few weeks to lead up to what we shared last week, and we're looking forward to the discussions for the meeting this Wednesday night, which will be in person at 6 o'clock at our Board of Education conference room at 100 South Turnpike. So that has taken up a tremendous amount of our time moving forward. And the other thing I just wanted to mention was, Dr. Thompson had an opportunity today to honor all of our mentors, and I know Mr. Vado was there as well and Mr. Deering, to honor our mentors today at a small reception at Central Office. So it was lovely to really have an opportunity to thank all of our teachers, who really mentor our new teachers coming through. So it was a lovely event today, and we appreciate all of their hard work as well. So I'm going to pass it on to Mrs. Latour.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few quick announcements from the Curriculum Office. One is for our public. We are still registering students for the 23-24 school year, so keep those registrations coming. We have a typical kindergarten class coming in in terms of enrollment numbers. Our building principals are reaching out to families as they register and as they plan their kindergarten orientations. So please be sure to finish up both parts of your Power School registration piece, so we can send those registrations on to the schools. The Connecticut State Semitive Assessment Window is closing. That is our Smarter Balance Assessment and our NGSS Assessment, which is the English Language Arts Math and Science Testing Required of grades three through eight and grade 11. As you heard from our reports, this evening, high school has their NGSS tests coming up, and the elementary and middle school levels are primarily just doing makeups at this point. All buildings are wrapping up their end-of-year screening assessments. That is I-ready, STAR, HMH Growth Measure. They have been using the first few weeks of May to test their students, and our building administrators will include those results in their school improvement and department improvement plans. So the board will have the ability, as will the public, to see where our students started in the fall, where they were in the winter, and then how they're ending the school year. These assessments are primarily aligned to grade-level standards to show the progression of students' mastery of content throughout the grade level. And then finally, as Mrs. Rachio mentioned earlier, we did submit as a district our financial waiver for the Right to Read legislation, if you recall. We did submit the curriculum waiver at the end of February. We have yet to hear back from the state about that. They did not have a definitive timeline at the time. state about that. They did not have a definitive timeline at the time we submitted in February, just that we could potentially hear on or around July 1, so we're still waiting to see how they've evaluated our curriculum. So, to cover all our bases, we also submitted the financial exemption waiver. This allows districts to defer the reading program due to financial distress for a year, which I feel like we're in that position right now. And we submitted that on May 16, and we should hear back from the state on June 16, so on or around June 16. It was made clear within that waiver that we also submitted the curriculum waiver as well, but we wanted to be proactive in making sure that our district was considered for the financial exemption. So, that's, that's all for now from curriculum, and I'll have another update for everyone at our June meeting. If we, if we hear anything sooner, I will be sure to reach out.
Mrs. Turner?
No?
Wow, okay. I wasn't expecting that. As our, item number 16, we have announcements. There's a couple different things here, so please do pay attention. Wednesday, May 24, at 6:00 PM in person, we will have a special Board of Education meeting to continue our budget discussions. This will be at the Board of Education Conference Room. Moving into June, we will have, on June 5, Monday, our regular instructional committee meeting via Google Meet at 6:00 PM. The following Monday, June 12, we will again have via Google Meet our committee meeting for the operations committee. Immediately following the operation, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say immediately, at 7:00 PM, following the operations committee meeting, there will be a special instructional committee meeting, and that is for the purposes of reviewing the results of the middle school and high school risky behavior survey. So, to the extent that there's any press that we want to get from that, if you'd like to write something about that, it is definitely something that this board has put a lot of effort into, what questions to ask our middle school students. This is the first middle school study that we'll be getting results back from, and this is the first post-COVID study that we'll be getting information from, from our high school students. So, we have multiple people who will be presenting that evening, and we are looking forward to figuring out where our students are and how we can help them. And I know that this was not an easy task to do a couple days before graduation, and we pushed as a board, and as always, Central Office, you stepped up and you made sure that this happened the week of graduation, so that we could have conversations about what our next steps are and make sure that we're addressing all the needs of our students and families. So, thank you for that. Item number 17, the next date for our monthly meeting will be Monday, June 19, here in the Board, are we going to be here? Are we going to be, it's a Board of Education. It's going to be here? No, Board of Ed Office. Okay, so for some reason, this, this building must be busy that day. So, Monday, June 19, we will be at the Board of Education Conference Room for our regularly scheduled monthly meeting at 6:30. And then to remind the public, as we go into July and August, we do not have regular committee meetings, instructional operations. We will just have our monthly meetings as we enter into our summer schedule. Having no other business to come before the board this evening, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all, and have a good week.